We've got a meeting coming up Monday night, the 28th. And one of the main thrusts, I guess, of our meeting is to try to get a budget adopted. And I kinda wanted to know if anyone had specific questions about our budget for Monday night before we try to adopt the budget. Is there anything that is gonna be complicated for us to act on Monday night?
I don't think we'll know that till we see it, will we?
Well, Allen Cantrell has presented it. Tammy and I had the privilege in our department heads to sit in on a meeting. Based on our projects that we have going on and our input that we'll have to inject, it appears that we're gonna be adopting another deficit budget, a little over a million dollars. Last year, we adopted one with over two million dollars in it, but we didn't spend all the money we planned to spend, but it looks like that we may actually carry out most of these projects. Don't know if they'll all happen in a year, but most likely they will. So I figure we'll be spending most of the money we've adopted in this budget. And it looks like we're about a million dollars down. Revenue's continuing to be good. Our numbers are looking pretty good. What's coming in? We had an outstanding year, this past year, for our income from both our sales tax revenue and from our occupational tax. We met our budget on alcohol. We had enough to pay the school without having to dip into the till on that. So all the numbers look pretty good. We've got about two and a half, a little over two and a half million. I believe we showed in our last bank statement in our general fund after paying for the rec center project, we have taken possession of the rec center. We're gonna have a little ribbon coating over there in the morning. Hope everybody can attend. It's gonna be at 10 o'clock for just a short ceremony to try to reopen our rec center officially. And so, hope you can be there for that. Won't take a lot of your day to come and do that. Of course, I guess all of you are aware that Mr. Les Walters is retiring. He's having a little reception tomorrow, middle of the day, so hope all of you can come to that also for a few minutes and wish Les well on his journey for the remainder of his days. And Les has been with us 40 years in the paper, given a good effort, so we'd like to send him off with a salute.
What time is that gonna be?
It's gonna be at noon.
Before vases, it talks?
It's at the papers. And we're lending a few chairs to the... The rec center's gonna bring a few chairs over to supplement what seating they've got there. It'll start at 12 o'clock now. We're doing the rec center deal at 10 o'clock.
I put copies of the budgets in everybody's box, so y'all should have them for the water department and the city.
Yeah, your budget numbers are there. If you have questions, specific, Allen Cantrell has gone over these numbers for us, and I wish you'd address that. I'm gonna try to have him here Monday night for any questions you may have. But it's gonna be real important to adopt our budget. As you can see, Adam Bower will be funding our Chamber of Commerce for the coming year. They've not asked for any increases in their budget this year. I believe this is... Isn't this the same amount we gave them last year?
Yes.
Yeah. And that kinda keeps them functioning. Our commitment with them is that for the funding we give them to carry out their activities, they promise us all these events right here throughout the year. Our Bloody Hacks Fall Festival that was scheduled for Saturday has been postponed due to weather conditions that don't look favorable for it. So I believe November the 2nd is the new date for the fall festival, so that's been postponed. We have been reapproved for the, without any cuts from the state, our $450,000 grant held up on this Raggedale project. Raggedale is getting new water sewer and sun paving on the street that's gonna be torn up while we're doing the new pipes in there. And the housing authority's putting around $310,000 of this money up. We're putting 220 or so, and the grant money is $450. So we can vote now to go ahead with that project. That's one of the projects, of course, that's been in this upcoming budget. You'll see, there's a place in your budget numbers that show all the projects we're gonna be involved in. One will be the Highway 35 project to do the turn lanes for Loves. And then we've got Raggedale. We'll have a little bit of expense over here at Buccaneer Drive, very little expense. The projects being paid for, we've gotta pay for the oversight or engineering. And then our street paving project is where we're paving those six streets. We've got a grant for 200 for that, and then we'll be paying the difference on that. So that's the four projects we've got ongoing that's in this budget.
That budget will look like a financial statement. It'll look like the ones y'all get every month, but it'll be the year 2020. If y'all are having trouble finding it. Some of them will be to individual departments as well.
I'm open to any topics that may be on your minds this morning. I've been out of town, didn't plan a real agenda for this meeting, except I wanted us to look at the agenda for October 28th, just to be aware of what we're gonna be working on. And tell us about the item that's on for the public library. What does Allen do, gonna consist of?
They're just needing to replace one of their board members. It was a spot that was left vacant when, I think, Ms. Feldman moved.
Okay.
And they've requested to fill it with...
That's for Ms. Feldman? She moved away?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll be announcing that appointment. I remember now we discussed that. Charlotte has moved to... Did she go to Florida?
I think so.
I think she did, Charlotte, probably. She had been a real faithful supporter of Clyde Newk's library and Miss Charlotte, of course, but we're getting a fine young person that's interested in this type of work. Has let it be known that she'd like to be appointed, so we've agreed to appoint her replacement.
Who is it? Have you?
Sheila Schatz.
Who's Sheila Schatz?
That's Don Schatz's daughter.
What does she do?
She has been active in the church programs at First Baptist Church over the years. I think, I know her mother's real active.
Is she married?
I don't think she is.
No.
I think there's an event going on at the Indian Mounds tomorrow.
Yeah, the new signs, Alabama, University of Alabama's bringing our new signs into town tomorrow to post at the Indian Mounds. It'll have a little history of the mounds written out on it, and we're gonna be putting up new signage. And we're gonna have a little event down there at 1:30 tomorrow. So if you can attend that, we're gonna try to publicize that a bit. The mounds have been put on the tour, Alabama tour, of places to see in Alabama, and we're getting new signage. The University of Alabama has an indigenous people's division that they've been working with us on, and they brag on our mounds as being some of the best natural mounds in the state. So we're proud of our Indian mounds and the heritage that goes with that, and we're gonna put new signs up that'll help us identify when people come to see them. Tammy, did you think that the Bloody Hacks River Fall Fest was gonna be a big one this year?
I have no idea.
Okay, I need a lot of times you get involved in the festivals.
I know that we changed it before in the past, and it's always worked out when the date has been changed, so hopefully it's gonna work out this time.
I announced it this morning at the radio station that the date had been changed due to weather, and hope that everybody could continue to consider coming.
When did you change it?
November the 2nd.
November the 2nd.
Same hours, just a different date. We hope the weather will improve. I understand we're gonna have kind of a washout over the weekend, possibly Friday and part of Friday and all of Saturday.
That would've been bad timing, wouldn't it?
Everybody's changing their football game. Except for that, a lot of people.
There was a bunch of them.
Heard a man speak, he was the best presenter at our conference, and Reno, he's written a book, Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community. And you can go online and read after him, and some of the things he said made so much sense. You know, stay disengaged from your youth, don't promote any growth in your community. It's just, a lot of the stuff is down to earth that he's put in his book, but the way he comes into it, I've got all 13 of the topics written down, and I'm gonna try to get one of his books because I think it's worth reading and listening to the guys. He's quite a speaker, I know that. He was the only speaker at the conference that didn't read from him. What, did the presidents use the teleprompter?
Yeah, teleprompter.
He didn't need any of that. He spoke freely, and it was an amazing presentation. He was the only speaker that got a standing O at the end of the presentation. I think I must be the only person that could get that close to Reno and not go to the slot machines. I didn't put one dime, not even a penny, in a machine. And one of the ladies that was on the roster, $190,000 while she was out there. I didn't even pull a handle.
I bet she was late for work this morning.
I said, "Did she have enough sense?" And I said, "She did. She took her money and went home." But we stayed at a place called The Pepper Mill. The rooms at Gub Sewers were $155 a night. The rooms in this place were $139 for double occupancy. Kathy went with me. I had to pay for her plane ticket. Anyway, NACOG was good to me. They bore, uh, spared the rest of the expense. But it's amazing, if you get a room in Reno for $139, they believe you're gonna leave a lot of money with them, otherwise, they were wrong about me. But a cup of coffee this tall is four bucks. I have one of those.
I was wondering if we had to pay for it, I think it is.
So did that a penny of it? Not once left.
The chamber, are they gonna have to move by December the 1st?
Yes, they are. We, uh, we're gonna have a little space available at the police station. If we don't work out something with the chamber to occupy the selling's house, I'd like to suggest we move the chamber into one of our rooms at the police station that's gonna be vacated soon. They've got to move the building there and some of the soul, and so they've got to relocate. And they gotta do it in pretty short order.
I didn't know if that needed to be added to the agenda or wait till the next meeting?
They're taking on that. If y'all don't have any objections to that, we might wanna just let us all consent by vote to offer them a spot at the police station.
Where the police station is now?
Yeah.
Are we leaving the police department up there where it is now?
It appears we are. To move them, at this point, I just don't think we've got the funds to do it. For right now, I think they're gonna have to stay put. There's no possible way we can come out with enough money to build them a place without We just found out about, a week ago, a little over a week ago, that they put us on notice that the building they've occupied there for the last year or two has been sold, and they'll have to vacate. I guess it's by the end of the year, is what?
I don't know why, December the 1st is what I keep spouting in my... I haven't heard that officially, but I was thinking somebody said they had to be out by December the 1st.
They'll have to have a new home by the 1st of the year.
And we were gonna put them where, thinking about putting them where Marla is at, at the municipal court, 'cause she's gonna be here November the 1st, and that would leave her office vacant.
Yeah, I'd like to offer them a spot at the police station. I think it would keep us from having to do a lot of wiring and things like that. The computers, the phones, all be there for them. All that stuff costs money. If you have to go out to a building, reconnect them, a lot of times you're out a good bit of expense. Take some of that pressure off of us.
So do you want me to add that to the agenda for this?
Y'all wanna vote on that Monday night? That's where it houses our chamber. We need to make them this offer that may not be what they decide to do, but they've asked us to find them a spot.
I don't think unless there's a contract involved, we have to vote. I think it's just your decision, unless there's an actual contract involved.
Other than that agreement thing?
And this is for services, this isn't for a location, so...
Good point.
I mean, I don't... It's not like they're gonna be...
Ask Scott that we need to vote on it. If we don't need to vote on it, we'll just make them an offer.
Yeah, because it's not like they're gonna be providing any extra services. They'll only provide what's in their contract, so, unless you're asking for rent or for something like that.
Well, I like for them, as much as they can, to field questions from, you know, I like for them to talk to people that call in. I've had folks say, when I'm looking at a town, I always try to go through the chambers, so sometimes they're our voice in some ways. Not officially, but unofficially, they can answer questions for us.
I think you're right. I think any kind of business things coming in, that's one of the first things they want to talk to, is the chamber.
Yeah, they get a lot of information about the community from the chamber leaders. And I have a lot of people say they specifically look at the chamber when they're looking at We'll find out if we need to vote on that. If we don't, we'll just make them an offer, and if we do need to vote, then we'll have it on the agenda. That might be a change. We'll check with Scott today and see if he thinks we need to make a vote on that. Wade, you got anything on your mind today?
Uh, no, not really.
Supposed to have a tree cutter here in a little bit. We've got the tallest pine on the property, I guess, is dead, and it's right back here. We're supposed to have a van here with a bucket truck to make us estimate on taking it down. They took a tree down, down by Franklin Apartments. We had two bids. One guy wanted $650 to take the tree down. He did it for $400 and saved us $250 and took the brush with him, so, you know, you can't beat that. There's a big oak tree, too, I know of these. But this one's, we can't just fall it log length, it's gonna have to come down from the top, 'cause it would probably damage fire lines and everything else if it fell.
Well, I can tell you it's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, it probably is.
I had a bunch of them to build a firehouse, tearing over wood and a bunch of those trees there, $6,000 and something.
I just had seven trees removed from my yard, and the cost was, for them to clean up the brush and everything, is $2,000, which I thought was a pretty good deal. One of them was a giant white oak with more limbs than I wanna do count. Anybody else got anything you wanna talk about this morning?
Do we have a completion date on the street light swapover?
Hmm, it's pretty close.
I've just been noticing a couple of them still not changed over, so I was curious about that.
We're getting, we're getting pretty close on the LEDs. The LED lights really focus the light into an area. I like the way they look. Good, uniform light, concentrated on the area it's supposed to be concentrated on instead of just spread all over creation.
And now we have a timeframe of when they're gonna start, actually pushing their, at Lowe's?
Uh, the project's been pushed back six weeks from the original date that he agreed to start, and it'll be over in the winter now before they start anything. They ran into a problem with a project out in the west, delayed their work crew a little bit. He said probably about six weeks later than they'd intended to start.
About February 3rd.
The entire Loves project should be finished in the year 2000. We should have it open at the end of 2000.
20?
2020, yeah. I'm saying 2000, 2020.
We've already passed that one, right?
2020, I'm talking about, yeah. Can't say what I'm thinking.
It's okay, it's early in the morning.
I'm sorry we had to cancel our festival this weekend. I hope the vendors that were planning to come don't have other plans for the next week, but I think it was the best decision, I really do. I fully concur with the decision. You can't have a festival, an outdoor festival, in a rainstorm. It's just a good call.
When was it put off to?
November 2nd. Appreciate everybody coming out early. If y'all like this time of the day, we'll have all of them on at 8 o'clock, and I'll actually be on time. If I hadn't had photo, that lumber, lumber truck, for miles, I couldn't get around him. Finally, when he pulled to the right, up there, this side of the new bridge, we slipped by him.
Well, I, I've got a question now.
Go ahead.
When we talked about this meeting, somebody that was head of this organization was gonna bring biscuits and sausage, and I didn't eat a bite for breakfast because... That's crazy, you're shaking like you are. Yeah, and coffee?
Yeah. Let's go to touch.
I just wonder, is it too late now? But that was, I understand, we talked about it in here for 30 minutes, and that was the last words, was we'll have, I'll see if we have sausage and biscuits. So you must've spent a lot of money while you were done, instead of, no, you didn't go in the gambling joint, drinking liquor and nothing. And so, it must've been hit you hard. I've been there, I know it hit you hard.
I've got to be the only guy that'll go to Reno and not, not pull the handle one time. I did get a chance to walk through the area. We were going from point A to point B, and I was overwhelmed by the tobacco smoke in the place. I said, "I can't stay in here. I can't, I can't handle this."
They have non-smoking areas, or, that's what I've heard.
Oh.
He done told it.
They have no drinking, too.
No comment.
We were waiting to fly... We were waiting to fly out of the airport yesterday morning in Reno. They have plenty of slot machines there, too.
They do?
People were sitting there pulling the handles like crazy.
What gets them to roll up in their wheelchair?
Yeah, yeah. Sit there all five of them.
Credit card.
I've heard that.
How many folks, how many folks are y'all expecting at Les's reception tomorrow?
Probably twenty.
The whole city, it seems like.
It's been pretty well publicized. I'm looking for a pretty large turnout.
I'm ready.
At the newspaper office.
Scott Johnson.
It's, it's at noon now.
Yeah. Gonna be a lot of people.
I think there's gonna be a good number.
I think they're more, I'm gonna miss it.
That's a good question. It's, it's at lunchtime.
If Les gonna have to pay for it or not.
I'm, I'm assuming there'd be some sort of refreshments there. Whether they're serving steak or not, you better call Les sometime.
I can tell you that.
You're not allowed to call.
I'm just kidding.
He live there.
He probably has a table dancing, he's always.
All right, I'm going to work.
Tammy?
Mark her fail.
Don't work too hard, Tammy.